Good evening. I'm Jim Campanini, the editor of The Sun, and I want to thank all of you for attending this first of two debates here at gorgeous Harmony Hall in Drake. The municipal election is going to be held next week. We hope that all of you will participate. And this evening, I want to thank our partners, Drakehead Cable Access TV and The Sun. This is a joint production. The video of this will be aired tomorrow evening and also be aired on the lowllsun.com for your viewing pleasure. With that, I want to introduce our recorder, Amaris Garcia, who will be covering this event, our videographer, Chris Tierney, and the moderator for the two debates this evening, political editor, Chris Scott of The Sun. With that, I'm going to bid you adieu. Thank you.
Well, good morning, every, good afternoon, everyone. It's, I see some familiar faces here. Good evening to everyone. I'd like to just open up with a couple of ground rules. And when we've been organizing these debates, we like to stress the informal nature of them all. So we're going to go about 45 minutes, and each candidate will be asked the same question, and they'll have one minute to respond, and then the other candidate has 30 seconds for a rebuttal. If they want to discuss one particular issue for longer than 90 seconds, that's fine with us, and we'll allow that to happen. There will be no opening statements, but we'll give everybody about a minute, minute or so, to make a closing remark. And if there's enough time after about 45 minutes, unless I run out of questions, maybe we can take a few questions from the audience as well. So without further ado, we'll just get right to the questions. I want to thank the candidates for both attending. There's a third candidate, Mr. O'Connell. He was invited here tonight, but he chose not to attend. So we'll start with, why don't we start with the incumbent, and then we'll go to the challenger, and then I'll try to remember that. And I just, and the bell. My boss, Jim Campanini, will ring the bell at one minute, okay? So, Mr. Wilkie, this question is posed to you. "In 2016-17, the eighth grade class at Richardson Middle School had 323 students. This year, Drakehead High had 225 incoming ninth graders, meaning one third of families chose not to send their child to the high school. Why are those families voting with their feet? What is the district not offering those families?"
Thanks for the question, Chris. Thanks for everybody for attending tonight, and hopefully for the viewers that are watching at home throughout the week when DATV airs the time with myself and Mrs. Kufagasis. So I would say that one-third of families, and you look at that number, in the educational landscape, the market that we, that we live in today, I mean, I graduated from Drakehead High School in 1992, and you had a couple of choices that you might even consider as a, as an eighth grader going into the high school. You look at the, the market today, and there are, there's the adoption or the engagement with charter schools. There's the opportunity to go to private schools. So for us, it's about competition. And I think what the, the real question is, or where we answer it, and I think we've started to do a good job of this over the last six years. What we've started to do a good job of over the last six years is recognize that, do a better job of marketing our AP classes, the success of our music and arts, the success of our athletic teams, the tremendous teachers and staff that we have. That's really on us to, to do a better job of that, and I believe that we're making progress.
I would also like to thank everyone who took the opportunity to be here this evening. I think it's a great chance for us to explain who we are and what we believe in. To begin with, I don't think you need to start looking when the students are in the eighth grade exiting to go to other locations. We need to start earlier to find out what it is that our families are dissatisfied with, if they are. And one of the things that I believe is that we should be looking at exit interviews, taking the time to find out why someone perhaps even as early as the fifth grade, because they have the opportunity to go to the Innovation Charter Schools starting in the fifth grade. What is making those families decide to leave? And not in, you know, any kind of antagonistic way, but just simply a good question. What is it that did not keep you here in the Drakehead Public Schools? It may have been for reasons I had a son who went to the Greater Lowell Technical High School, which is still part of the public school system, but is not, it is causing attrition from the high school. He had daydreamed about going to that school since elementary grade. But there are families who are choosing to leave for other reasons, and I think we need to begin to ask earlier and get a more concrete answer than conjecture, and be able to work with that.
I'd like to just stay on this issue just for a second. Joe, you talked about competition. You didn't mention any of those schools, but that's okay. So it's, you view it as more of a competition issue, but are there any shortcomings in the Drakehead Public School or at the high school that you can pinpoint as a possible reason for that?
No, I don't, I mean, I think we went through a renovation project, and historically speaking, any district, and this is consistent with other districts that have gone through a renovation project, you will see numbers and enrollment dip. We're actually seeing an uptrend. Our total enrollment right now in the entire district is, you know, just edging over 3,600 students. So I think, just as, not so much as a rebuttal, but if you're looking, I'm thinking about this from a consistency standpoint, the trend that you're seeing, Drakehead is not alone in the trend with students seeking other schools, and seeking either charter schools at a younger age, as Mrs. Kufagasis mentioned, but going into private schools, some of those other, when I use the word competition, I'm talking about other opportunities when they're leaving eighth grade into high school. Drakehead is, that's consistent throughout the Merrimack Valley. If you look at enrollment numbers, again, the bigger opportunity for us is to beat the drum of our staff, of the technology, of the opportunity that awaits a student to go to Drakehead High. I would also echo this time of year, and I hope I'll get the chance to say this again a few more times tonight, this time of year, I look around the room tonight, and I know that there are a few parents here who have students that have graduated from Drakehead High School. And to see some of the success that our students have had that have gone through the high school, I think that's something that we're starting to, again, do a better job of sharing with members of the community. Our students are performing at amazing achievement levels that are amazing, and going to some of the finest institutions throughout the world.
Okay. Sue, do you want to take another shot at that?
Just, just shortly, I have two, I have three children, two of whom graduated from Drakehead Public High School and attended or are graduated from UMass Lowell, so they have done very well. I would say that our high school is doing fabulous, and certainly our staff, our educators and our administrators do a terrific job. But we do need to take a look at some of the things that a parent whose child is considering college, such as in language programs, being able to offer more diversity for our languages, which are core requirements for college. We do have terrific advanced placement programs. The Lowell Sun just touted an engineering program that we scored very highly with this week. And we do need to continue to market those kind of things. But I think we do have some areas that we've been a little bit challenged with, and we need to improve on those as well.
Just a quick follow-up for you. I find this, this topic fascinating. When you say an exit interview, does that include the student as well, or is that just the parents?
I think that would be a good perspective to consider, but I think you have to consider that from an age-appropriate level. If somebody's in the fifth grade, they may feel a little bit uncomfortable with something like that, but somebody in the eighth, or even if they were choosing in high school, might be willing. But I think primarily, it's something that, a conversation that takes place in the family and amongst the parents, and I think that it could start with the parents.
Sounds good. I'll set with that, Joe? Okay. These questions are in no particular order. If they seem a little bit repetitive, I apologize for that. We're trying to hit new topics with each one. So here's number two. "About 1 in 5 Drakehead students identify as a minority. According to the Department of Education website, in the 2016-2017 school year," you can tell where I've been, "only 1% of the teaching staff is non-white. Is this an issue? And if it is, how should the district address it?" Sue, that, you can take the, you're first on that one.
I'm quite certain that the town of Drakehead has put forth every effort to comply with hiring practices that reach out to diversified background of educators, so I have no concerns there. You know, having a diversified staff and administrators is always a plus, whether or not, depending on what your student ratio is. So I don't believe it is an issue. I think that all of our students get an equal education, and that we do reach out and do our best to maintain a culturally diverse academics, as well as working with our staff and our educators.
Thank you. Joe?
Yeah, I would echo and share a similar sentiment as Mrs. Kufagasis, then appreciate her recognizing that the district and the administration does, when we seek to hire new employees, that we utilize resources like the Lowell Sun, you know, we advertise on school spring, some of these resources that are used by multiple districts in the area, and that also reach out to diverse pools and advertise to diverse pools of candidates. So I think through that, while the number, 1%, might be a cause for pause, I think that it's something for maybe the district to be a little bit more self-aware of moving forward.
Can you offer any ways that the district should do that?
I mean, I've worked in recruitment advertising for almost 22 years. I believe that there are ways that you can, you know, you look at some, you look at individual positions, and there is a limited talent pool. And that's, that's not uncommon for software developers out in the marketplace. It's very common for, say, we're in the midst of a special ed director position right now. It's a very small labor pool, very difficult labor pool to, to reach out to. So I think from a, again, touting what the district has to offer, talking about the, the great families that we have here, talking about the great support that the schools have when engaging with candidates, doing a good job of telling our story.
Thank you. Are you all set with that, Sue?
No, I would concur. Thank you.
Okay. Let's move on, on a similar topic. If a charter school wanted to locate in Drakehead and set up shop in Drakehead, would you welcome it, or would you oppose it? Joe, that's your first question.
Yes. So, as Mr. Campanini might recall, or you might recall, when there was the question, was it two years ago or a year and a half ago that was on the ballot that had to do with charter schools, I wrote a long editorial, and I thank you both for giving me the venue to, to publish that. But my feelings on charter schools were posted there, and to me, it's about equity. And equity is that any student that wants to go to the Englesby Elementary in our district, any student that wants to go to Drakehead High School that's in our district, will come to that school. That's not the same for charter schools when they set up shop in your town, when they should have set up shop in your community. It's a lottery. It's a limited population. When those students reach a certain degree of need for their educational programming, typically charter schools will send those students back to the sending district, and the sending district will pick up whatever special services that student has to, has to, that student needs via their IEP. So that's something, there's, I think that there is a, I compared it to the T. We all know throughout the Commonwealth that the T has its struggles. And to me, that doesn't mean that if the blue line is struggling, it certainly doesn't mean, and I say struggling, but if the blue line has its challenges, that doesn't mean you set up a whole entire new blue line right next to it. I think what you do is you analyze what's going on with the blue line, and you come with, you come to solutions and funding mechanisms that can support that blue line, because it's been there doing a great job. The Drakehead Public Schools is, and let me be really clear about this, by no means a struggling school district. By any size, shape, or, or measurement, are we a struggling school district. We are a performing school district at high achievement levels of academic success. So I think the question that you're asking, I would want to analyze-
Yeah, I'm still looking for an answer.
Yeah. I would, I would want to analyze why the charter school is coming to Drakehead, what they bring to our community. Are they partnering with our community? What are the funding mechanisms? What does it mean to the town as a taxpayer? What does it mean to the town as, as a dad of two young students? What is that going to mean for our community as a whole?
So I'm sensing there'd be opposition from your part?
There'd be curiosity. I'm not saying I'd be opposed. Again, it would depend on, again, I don't believe that we're a struggling school district. If you look at the history, and I would encourage everybody to just go to Google and put in the start of charter schools, and, and, you know, when the first charter schools were started back in the early 90s, 1992-ish, when, how they came to light, they came to light in struggling school districts where students were not offered a fair public education. They were not offered a public education that was, that was meaningful to those families. And the families in the local area, and there were some activists that said, "This isn't right." I agree with that. The educational offerings in this community are fantastic.
Okay. Sue?
So as a member of the school committee, I don't know that it really is about my role to welcome or not to welcome a charter school, or a private school, or any other school as a competition, quote-unquote, to, to the Drakehead Public Schools. My job is to make sure that I'm offering such a sound educational opportunity that people aren't interested in any other location. So I wouldn't take an opinion one way or another. I happen to agree with Mr. Wilkie that a sound public school, like we have here in Drakehead, is the best opportunity for our children. That's why all three of my children graduated through Drakehead Public Schools, and I'm very proud of that. So I would look at it as, do I welcome it or not welcome it? I would go back to what I said earlier, which is working hard to maintain the things that we know work here in Drakehead, our strong sense of community, our classes, and continuing to promote, market that better, say, on our website, and through other marketing efforts, and taking a good, hard look through exit interviews if families are choosing to leave, as to why they are, and then focusing on those issues and fixing them. But I don't see it as a welcome or not welcome, because really, it's, that's not what my role is. My role is to fix the schools that we have.
Okay. You all set with that one, Joe?
Yeah.
All right. Next question, I believe this goes to Sue, correct? "The school committee made a vote earlier this year about using breathalyzers at certain school events, proms and, and those types of events. Do you think that that was a good vote? Would you have made that vote? And, and please be specific with your answer on that."
So, you know, that was a, that was a difficult issue for me. I began by being in attendance and watching it, and my very first reaction was absolutely not. As the parent of the three children, I had all kinds of concerns and questions. I did do my due diligence in looking up these policies. I found that it was all across the country, that it had been implemented for a long history. I went, I watched public, part of the public hearing, and I was present for the rest, and that was where my mind changed, because I was able to hear from Mr. Stone, administrators that I like and know and trust, our police chief, as to what their rationale was for it. And I think that the role of a committee member is not to go with a predisposed idea. You may have your own gut sense or reaction to something, but you also have to be willing to listen to your experts, to the people who are literally on the front lines every day, doing their job. And I came away with a very different sense than I did that evening. If I were a member of the school committee, I would have to say I would have walked in that evening probably with great concerns, and by that, by the end, I would have been willing to vote for it. And I don't say that lightly, because it'll leave me. It was something I felt pretty strongly about. I do, however, still agree with some of the parent concerns. I think that it was equally important to discuss not just the vote, but the process by which the vote was taken. And by that I mean, that I think people need better information in a little bit more timely fashion. You have the requirements per the school committee policy of a first reading on a policy change, and then a second reading and a vote. In this instance, there was the public hearing, but the public hearing also took place the same night as the vote, and if it were possible, I would have liked a public hearing where the type of information that changed my mind was given to people before that vote was taken. Because if someone left that hearing and they had questions or concerns, they could or should have had more time to digest the information, ask the questions, and feel more at ease, even if they didn't agree with the vote at the end of it. So there's two steps to that. One is about the actual breathalyzer choice, and the other was about the process.
Right. And, so you can address both. Why don't you just address the breathalyzer first, since you were part of that vote, then we can talk about the process.
Yeah, so from the breathalyzer side of things, I think folks that followed it were pretty in, or you could be pretty in tune with my opinion, my, and my ultimate vote. I was in favor of it. I was in favor of it after, similar to anybody that's watched me for six years, someone that does a fair amount of due diligence, that I use my own personal network of educators, use, whether that be in Drakehead, whether that be outside of Drakehead. I reached out to and had coffee with a number of people that have been principals for 20 years, somebody that's been an administrator in a local district for 30 years. And one of the comments that he shared with me, one of these individuals, was, "Look at Wilk. This is something we did in our school district 10 years ago. The kids love it. The kids have been in favor of this. The kids support it. The kids want to go to a safe environment. They don't want the shenanigans of the limited population that's going to potentially do this, or engage in that type of behavior." So somebody that I, I'm not an educator. I'm on the school committee, but I'm not in a building every single day educating students, making decisions about discipline, making decisions, and impacting a child's educational future, and how they feel about education. To me, it was a very easy decision, shifting to the process. We have meetings twice a month on Monday night. They're in the Learning Commons at Drakehead High School. Our average attendance during an election year, not during an election year, during an election year, we get a couple of folks that might, that might come to our meetings.
Someone other than the custodian?
We have a couple of regulars, and then, again, it depends during, during an election year. So where I'm going with that is, our meeting agendas are published. People have more than ample enough time. I know that every single committee member, I can speak for every one of them confidently when I say, "All of us answer email. All of us also have professional jobs as well." So it might be 48 hours, it might be 72 hours. Sometimes it's not as fast as people would expect it to be, but people do respond. So from the, the indication that, or the inference that it's, the way that the decision was made, there was a first reading, there was a public hearing. For me, as an elected official of six years, if there was something that was said during that public input session that we had for 55 minutes that was different, or would have made me cause for pause, I would have voted present that night. I didn't have any, there wasn't any new information. There wasn't anything that came to me that said, this is, to me internally, to say, "Joe, maybe you should, maybe you should think about this a little bit more. Maybe you should, you know, this, maybe you should have another discussion, talk a little bit more, poke our existing principal, poke the superintendent, poke the police chief, poke somebody else that you, that I've already had conversations with, that I've already done my research." So to me, and I stated it that night, that I was fairly certain, and it was taken out of context, fairly certain by the members of the committee, by how they opined on the subject, it's pretty safe to say that the vote went the way it did, and it did.
So I just want to make sure I understand this. So the, the agenda for a school committee meeting, you guys meet on Tuesday nights, right?
No, we meet on Monday nights.
Monday nights. The agenda is posted on when?
The Wednesday before.
The Wednesday before. And so you had a first reading of the proposal that Monday night, that Tuesday night, right?
No, we had a reading two weeks before.
Okay. And then you had the public hearing the same night?
No, the following meeting, two weeks later.
The following week? I know in Lowell, for example, some of the larger matters get referred to a public hearing that's held in the future. That wasn't done here?
No, it was referred to a public hearing-
Okay.
-in the future. That was the same as, the public hearing was before our regularly scheduled meeting. So to me, if there was something, again, if there was a, if there was a new, new element, a new variable, something new that came up that would have made me change my mind, I certainly would have considered it.
Okay.
And that's no disrespect to any of the participants in the public hearing.
Sue?
So I think that we need to remember, as a elected body, that there are two components to any kind of a public hearing. The first half is, of course, that you're educating yourself if you have any other questions, as Mr. Wilkie indicated, and I did my due diligence on this as well, that you're educating yourself when you have different experts coming before you. But you have to remember, this is also the opportunity, and most likely the first time, for your constituents to learn about this. And so when I'm saying that I would like that, that extra time, it was to offer the parents who perhaps had the strong feelings as I did, and took the time to come and speak that evening. And I don't know that all of the information is available the Wednesday before. The packet itself is not posted until the Monday of the school committee meeting. So some, sometimes, and not just on this particular issue, the extra information is not available until just hours before the meeting. So there was a first hearing, but then there needs to be that public hearing where the information itself is provided. And remember that it's not just about the school committee, but about the constituents, whose children in particular will have to be living with this new rule, and may or may not agree with it. So that was where that came from for me.
Okay, thank you. Joe, do anything else on that?
No, I think we can be self-aware enough to look at our policies and procedures on meetings, and if there's an opportunity to improve it, if there's, if folks feel like it isn't as transparent as it needs to be, that, I mean, open to always reviewing those type of things, yeah.
Sticking with the communication issue, earlier this year, there was a dust-up between the school committee and the superintendent over, over information that the superintendent should share with the school committee. Has that issue been resolved, to your liking, Joe?
I'm not sure I recall it. A dust-up with the superintendent.
Wasn't there an issue at a school committee meeting where there's a discussion about certain pieces of information the superintendent should share with the school committee?
So I think, if, if memory serves me, I think of what you're referencing is a request or a discussion around some of the finances of the, of the school district. So to be clear, we have the school committee, and then we have subcommittees. And on the subcommittee, there is a transportation subcommittee, there is a fee subcommittee, there is a finance subcommittee, and there are two members of the regular school committee that sit on the finance subcommittee. Those individuals meet with the superintendent and business manager on a regular basis, and they go through. Superintendent Stone, for me, again, having done this for six years, having talked with other school committee members in other local towns, how we operate, how we function, it's not that different than other districts. So from a, from an information request or perspective, what you're driving at here, to me, it was, it was a non-issue, and it was really a, an opportunity for one of our members to better understand what happens at a subcommittee meeting, what goes on in the finance subcommittee meeting, what comes out of the finance subcommittee meeting.
Okay. Sue?
I happen to think that it's crucial that the school committee and the taxpayers have easily accessible information in a timely fashion, and in particular fiscal reports. And one of the conversations that came up during that particular situation was that there was a lot being put on very busy staff, including our superintendent and our finance director at the time. And while I would agree that asking for something like a fiscal reporting program on maybe a one or two-week notice is difficult, these days with the computer programs that are available, if enough advance notice were given, I think it could become and should be a part of our routine, especially where we do run a very tight budget in Drakehead, not just in our schools, but in all of our departments, and people do ask questions. So to be able to have that, when you consider that the school committee has as one of its primary responsibilities, the oversight of the budget and how it's being expended, I don't want to hear on a second hand from a subcommittee. I think one of the compromises that was offered from the outcome of that was to post the subcommittee minutes online, and the financial discussions would be within. And I liken that to driving to Canada, but only being allowed to use all back roads. You know, if you want to get there, you have to drive the highway, so you need something. And on my job, I've helped to redesign a website for a multimillion-dollar catalog. And one of the things you look at is functionality. And I think that having the information for parents and taxpayers in general, as well as, of course, for the school committee, should be a routine part of what our superintendent and our business director does.
Thank you. Joe, anything else on that?
Yeah, I would just say it's sort of segueing off of Mrs. Kufagasis' personal experience as far as building a website, when, before being elected six years ago, we didn't post things like our budget review and critical financial documents on our website. Our website, now, you can go in and you can search for documents. It's native search, where you can find elements of minute, from, within minutes of meetings, you can find different pieces if you're, if you're looking. So I would, I would disagree in the sense that it's, it's, it's a wild goose chase. The superintendent and people that have watched meetings will hear me regularly say and address our secretary, school committee secretary, Mrs. Cindy Curtis, about, "Is everything up to date on the website that we are saying that we're going to post?" So our annual, one of our annual budget docs, we have encouraged each year for the superintendent to be extremely transparent about putting the numbers out there on our different staffing levels, on how we're spending. And it's very detailed, it's very granular. And that is a document to me, those are the type of documents that pre, before coming on the board six years ago, they didn't go online. Today, 2018, they go online. We are very transparent. There's nothing that we're trying to hide in any, again, in any size or manner from the school committee, or the superintendent, or the business manager.
You know, one of the things that, when I was sitting down and talking about what I wanted to run, people kept using the word transparency. And I don't like that word, quite simply, because it does imply that there's something to hide. And I don't believe that's the case at all. I prefer the word accessibility, because I think that what we do have is a greatly improved website from certainly six years ago, but think how far the internet and even your own cellphone has changed in the last six years. Of course, these things have improved, and I know that there's been a great effort. With regards to our website, I think we need to have one that is, got a staff member that is dedicated to it, even if it's done as an intern from a local college, because right now, we have very busy staff, people who are putting things on as they are able, and that is difficult to do. I give them all the credit for that. So that's not my implication at all, that there's a lack of transparency. I do believe, however, that having subcommittee minutes buried for those fiscal documents can be difficult to find. And I think it should be part of our website in a much more accessible fashion for people to look at.
Sounds good. You all set?
Just as a rebuttal-
Yeah, that's fine.
-I would go back to, we are a district with a number of elementary schools, a middle school, a high school, 3,650-odd students. Take a guess, a $40 million district, give or take, take a guess of how many technology staff we have. I would love to be able to do more. We have one. We have, we have one full-time technology staff member right now. And that individual does a ton for this district. So as far as accessibility, like, again, I go back to the- like, again, I go back to the advances we've made with our mobile apps, the advances we've made with our website, the advances we've made from a technology perspective. I'm hoping one of your questions touches technology, but within Google Classroom, and the collaboration that's happening between student, teacher, and, and parents. The advances, not on your finance question, but they are, you talk about accessibility. We are a very accessible district right now.
Well, let's talk about technology for a minute. It's not the question I was going to ask, hopefully we can get to that next, but it was just a year or two ago that there was a proposition, two and a half override. And I remember meeting with the superintendent and several members of the school committee, they came to the sun to try to pitch that override. If I recall correctly, that was rejected, was it not?
It was.
All right, so what has been done since? How has the Drakett School Committee and the Drakett School Department tried to resolve that technology issue, to your liking? Have there been cuts made in, in other areas? Have there been economies of scale? Have there been regionalization efforts?
Yeah.
With other school departments, such as the Greater Lowell Tech? Why don't you take that question first, and then Sue, you can respond.
Yeah, so it's, it's been the opposite, Chris, of, of some of the things that you alluded to. It's actually been a tremendous opportunity for the town, and there's been a tremendous amount of collaboration between Superintendent Steve Stone and our town manager, Jim Duggan. We were able to successfully work and partner, along with the selectmen, to receive certain grants. So grants, e-fed reimbursements, I forget the, the exact name of, of the name of the grants, but the e-fed dollars that we received, along with some money that was allocated at town meeting, have paid for fi, or is going to pay for fiber to be run, from, all the way from the administration building throughout the town. So when the fiber runs through the town, it's going to be able to drop at places like the library, at places like town hall, at places like fire stations and other public safety, the police station on Loon Hill Road. So this was an opportunity, one, there was awareness that we needed to upgrade our technology. It didn't happen in the override. That, that happens. We know that, that sometimes you take your licks in an override vote. So we took our licks, and we didn't stop there. The superintendent and town manager kept pushing. They kept pushing. I call it one of the biggest projects that's happened from a, from a technology and from a, that's happened within the school district since being on in six years. So what that will be able to do for each one of the buildings is improve the, the, obviously, the internal bandwidth. But you talk about collaboration in classrooms with smart boards and, and the Chromebooks that we're using. You talk about the state mandating some of the testing. We're doing testing on Chromebooks right now, and that's something you need bandwidth to be able to do it. You can't have screens just timeout, right? So that's an opportunity that we took, we, the override lost, we took the opportunity to improve our technology. So that's just one area. If I think-
What's the status of that project, by the way? Is that under construction?
It's in process.
Okay.
But there, there is, there was a slight delay, but it is in process. Yeah.
Meaning, have there been bids?
No, it's been bids, it's been a, there's been a selection of a, of the provider. It's, I say, it's in process.
In process, okay.
It's going in the right direction.
It's kind of vague, but I'll let you go with that.
Yeah, thank you.
Let Sue take a crack at that question.
So I happen to agree with Mr. Wilkie's answer, that, you know, the overrides, I attended most of the committee's discussions that led to the two override questions, and I was disappointed that they did not pass. But as a reminder, that it wasn't just about the schools, because they had been split, it was for public safety issues, as well as for the schools. Neither passed, which gave a very clear message that it was not just, oh, it's the schools. It wasn't that the schools were not making people happy, it was that, it was a fiscal question for the Drakett taxpayers. And I also agree with Mr. Wilsey, that, Wilkie, that the collaboration that took place very quickly between Mr. Stone and Jim Duggan to try and come up with a different solution to work towards that result was very gratifying. In fact, I think that our selectmen and our school committee, the joint subcommittee, have worked together very well to come up with other ideas for trying to look at funds within the schools and what other issues may be. One of the things that's coming up right now is a audit of the operating functions in the Drakett schools. And that was a product of the joint subcommittee that came back to the two boards and is being supported. And that's important, because I think we need to look at what is going on in the schools, so that people have a better understanding of our costs, our expenses, and will be able to feel more confident when they see, because I'm quite confident myself. But even if, if a small amount comes out of that, that then can be reapplied back towards technology, or back towards some of our eleven million dollars in capital improvement expenses, then it's being extremely well-spent.
I'll set with that, Joe. We'll move on to the next question?
Yeah.
Okay. Sue, this is, I'm going to address this to you first. Almost a year ago today, the superintendent of schools, Stephen Stone, was given a new five-year contract, three years ahead, three years ahead of his contract expiration date. The school committee voted three to two on that. I believe you were the chairman at the time, Joe, and you voted for it. If you had been on the committee then, would you have supported that? And, and please be specific in saying why or why not. Then, Joe, I'd like to ask you, do you believe he's lived up to his end of the bargain, since you extended that contract?
I know that caused a lot of upset at the time, and-
But did it with you?
Did it with me? Yes, at the time. You know, because I, I know our educators, and I know that, you know, we're all struggling when it, we're struggling when it comes to their pay scale and, and their concerns. We, we have some, we have some issues within our school district, I believe, in taking a look at, across the board, what is everyone getting paid, and how can we do better for our educators and our staff to maintain our highest quality of staffing levels. However, the school committee, in that circumstance, did do their due diligence in taking a look at what was going on in the marketplace. Mr. Wilkie referred to that earlier when talking about a diversified staff. When you have a very tight marketplace and high demand, what do you do to maintain the right person in the right position? And so, you know, I had to really sit back, and it was one of those things I'd have to say at that time, I was glad I had that luxury, so to speak, to really hear all of that issue, and say, okay, they, they made this choice because they have someone they value, because they know that he could be lured away to someplace else, and they have to make a choice to start from the top and see what else they can do to improve the rest of the system. So I, ultimately, yes. Having had that opportunity, I would have given him the raise as well.
Thank you. And, Joe, you want to follow up on that, in the year, in almost about a year since?
Yeah, so I mean, in a year since, I mean, I'd actually do a retrospective from sitting in this seat, interviewing Stephen Stone and a number of other candidates, some seven years ago, when I was first, or six years ago, when I was first on the committee. Actually, no, I'm sorry, I am right. So stand corrected. Seven years ago, because I was on the search committee before being elected. So sitting here in Harmony Hall, and having a number of candidates come through, I am absolutely thrilled with the decision. I believe that the number-one role of a school committee person is to maintain, secure, drive the district's leadership. Stephen Stone is the leader of the Drakett Public Schools, and I'm very happy with his performance, as well as the trajectory of the Drakett Public Schools. And I appreciate Mrs. Kufagasa's sharing that, looking at the decision that was made, it was a difficult decision for the school committee, that she would have made the same decision, that, I appreciate that.
What is it about the town, the town of Drakett and funding of the schools? We heard that, that issue come up during the override debate, that the town just does not fund its schools at a proper level. Town meeting is coming up, I believe, in a week or two. Joe, what are you preparing to try to convince this, the town and its residents to fund the school at levels that, that, that you see fit, maybe being able to hire more than just one IT person?
Um-
As you mentioned earlier.
Yeah, so I think, speaking at a high level or overarching about the town, I'm not necessarily, how do I say this? I, I think it's okay for people to be frugal, and, and want to make sure that their, that their dollars are being spent appropriately. I'm a taxpayer, and I pay a lot of money in taxes, and I want to make sure that Jim Duggan and Steve Stone are doing a good job with my tax dollars. So I think that's, that's not that different than some other communities in the area. I think for the town meeting, it's, it's an opportunity, there's been an opportunity, and the selectmen and the town manager have done a great job of looking at the school department's finances. Recently, the, the town manager and the selectmen all supported closing the gap, transportation gap that we've had. Typically, Drakett has not always funded the transportation deficit that we have. And that's something that the town manager came in, he committed to doing it. Here we are, it's 2018, he kept his word, as did the selectmen. So that, that takes off, this year, it's, it's going to be a difference of about a hundred and seventy thousand dollars, that we would have used school choice money for, like we've done in past years, to close that gap. This year, we're not going to have to do that. So I think as far as anything unique for me that you're going to see at, at town meeting, I, I don't, I don't have any rabbits up my sleeve right now. I think that the, again, the trajectory and the relations between the Drakett Public Schools and the town have dramatically improved in the last eighteen or twenty-four months.
So for me, for those who know me, I have a very strong and very independent voice. I'm not at all afraid to get up at town meeting or at other municipal meetings to speak when there's a need. But one of the things that I have felt, as a very active participant of Drakett Town Meeting, and a parent with children in the school district, is that if you wait until town meeting to advocate for the school budget, you've waited too long. Because it is a large and complex budget, and I don't believe that you can get up and begin to advocate in front of two, three, four hundred people, and break it down in a fashion that makes any sense. I agree with Mr. Wilkie. I think that we've made huge progress between our town manager and our superintendent, and I feel much more comfortable when we do go to town meeting, that what is happening is as proactive for the schools as possible. But I think the job of advocating for a budget in a school system is one of the reasons I believe in the fiscal reporting taking place throughout the year, is if people have a better sense of what's going on with our budget, in a more accessible fashion, there's that word I like, then they're going to feel a lot more comfortable when it's time to vote or discuss it on town meeting floor. Waiting until the month of June to at least explain where we are is not, to me, the right time. I also think going forward, if we have that, if we have that operational audit that we're discussing, which I will advocate for on town meeting floor this year, then I believe it's going to be a lot easier for us to be able to explain what our fiscal needs are.
Do you want to-
Only from a rebuttal, is anybody that knows me, or that's watched meetings on DATV, you'll know that I've been advocating for education for six years, or seven years, I mean, even before being on the board, being a member of the community.
Okay, thank you. It's six forty-five, let's try to get a few more questions in. This question isn't specifically related to the school department, as it is to just the, the general political climate in the community. And, Joe, we touched on this when we spoke on the phone yesterday. I'm going to pose this question to the Board of Selectment Candidates as well. It seems that this election cycle, there's been many charges and accusations made on various social media platforms. I won't get into all of them at this point, but some of those are viewed by people here in the community as libelous, and, and there could be some repercussions moving forward. What is your view of this particular activity? And what do you think the town should do to try to stop it, or to ratchet that back, if there's anything it can do?
Yeah, so I think, let me think on that for a second. So anybody that knows me, or has take, I've either taken the, the opportunity to get to know you, or we've gotten to know each other through me being on the school committee, or maybe our kids have played in the same team, or maybe I attended an event where, where your kids were, or your family was. Anybody that really knows me knows that I'm a really optimistic, positive person. I have zero energy for people that play in a world like that. I just think that there are too many-
An anonymous world?
In an, well, you could, you could use the word anonymous. Just in a world of attempting to discredit, defame, whatever you want to call it, people that have been members of this community for a long time, people that are elected officials, people that are running for office. I'm not saying that anybody's defamed you, but it's, I think that those type-
Good, because you haven't seen it.
Those, those type of things that, that happen, it's, it's incredibly unfortunate. And I tend to use all of my energy towards people and families that, that are, that are positive. There's, life's too short. I have zero energy for that type of stuff. None. That's why you would likely not see me comment when people say things. Yeah.
Thank you. Sue?
So there's a saying in the political world, that signs don't vote. Guess what? Neither does Facebook. Neither do any of the other particular social media platforms. They can be a method of communication, if you utilize them properly. And I entered into this, and people have said, you know, Drakett politics is a blood sport. No Band-Aids on me. I made it through. And I, I've enjoyed this process, and I'm going to continue to enjoy this process. And I'd like to thank my fellow candidates for making it an enjoyable process, where we respect the voters enough that we continue to try our best to get the information in front of them, because ultimately, that's what matters. And I agree with Mr. Wilkie a hundred percent. That's where I focus my energy. When there's a positive message, then, an opportunity for easily accessible information, then I would like to be a part of that. But I don't focus my energy in that direction. And I don't believe it's the town's job to fix that, it's the individual's job to. It's up to those who are choosing to run, to decide how they want to focus their energy. And this is how I'm choosing to focus mine, right in front of you, answering your questions, and having an opportunity to engage with people I respect.
Thank you. Good, one more question. Sue, we'll start with you on this one. What is your view of standardized testing? And do you think there's too much of it in Drakett, or too little?
Well, standardized testing isn't specific to Drakett. It's, it's, you know, statewide, and it's national. Standardized testing, so the interesting part of that is having a son who is dyslexic, I was very interested in what his test results were every year, because it was not as opinion-driven. I liked to see them, because it told me on a particular level how he was doing. And I utilized it as a, as a tool. However, I think that standardized testing has put our schools and our educators in a position where they literally do feel they have to teach to that test, where there is a burden that can be put on educators if their classroom makeup that particular year has a group of students that perhaps doesn't do as well on standardized testing. And so that educator is being judged on a test result, which they had no control over, no matter how, how hard they work. So I do believe if they're, if they're done in moderation, they can be a useful tool, but I think that doing it too much, it doesn't serve a purpose, and it is creating stress in our schools.
Thank you. Joe?
I would echo some of the same things Mrs. Kufagasa shared, and say that I think that the state, locally at the state level, and at the national level, with MCAS 2.0 and some of the different changes that have been either recommended, or that are in discussion in some of the educational subcommittees, there's clearly an appetite and a room for improvement. Do I think that there's a place in public education for standardized test, standardized testing? I'll say yes, as a, as a parent. As somebody that struggled historically as a student with standardized testing, I would say, geez, stay away with it. But no. I believe that there, there is a place, and that there is clearly an appetite for room for improvement.
Sounds good. Well, I've been given the hook by my boss. Okay, I'm sorry.
My show.
Okay. I thought you were giving me the hook.
Many people in the communities of downtown Connecticut, top Florida, said it could never happen here, that being gun tragedies that took innocent lives. How confident are you that it could never happen here in Drakett's public schools? And if you're not confident, what do you think that the school department and that this community has to do to make it one hundred percent safe for all the children in Drakett's public schools?
Joe, why don't you, why don't you take that first?
So happy to take the question. It's, I did a, I was at an event and talked with some folks a few weeks back, and I talked about this at length, so I'll keep this fairly short. But as a parent, as a member of a community, as somebody that went through schools in Drakett, could I say that I am a hundred percent certain that something, a tragedy could never happen in Drakett? I'm not qualified to say that. There's, I don't think that there's a person in this room that's qualified to say that, because tragedies can clearly happen anywhere. I think it's about preparation, it's about communication, and it's about collaboration. I think that right now, the Drakett Public Schools, three years ago, we became an ALIS district, which took the appropriate steps to train our, our school resource officer. At the time, it was Officer Quealy. We have a new school resource officer, and Officer Kukos. Both are trained in the ALIS programming, which is sort of becoming the standard nationwide, as far as a preparation for a school district. I think it's about collaboration between the Drakett Public Schools, the teachers, because the teachers are the ones on the front line. They're, they're the ones that are in the classroom if something strikes. So training them on ways to protect themselves, on ways to protect our students, very important. Communication, constant communication between our school administrators, and our local police department, and other authorities. There are other local, other law enforcement agencies that work with the Drakett Public Schools to educate us, to train us, to do different things. And from a preparation standpoint, while we're not going to get into it, there are ways, and there are avenues, that the Drakett Public Schools has taken to better secure our buildings. And I say better secure, that's doing different things, techniques to protect the children in the classroom, to protect the teachers.
Thank you. Sue?
I agree with Mr. Wilkie. I don't know that I would have the qualifications from an expert level to discuss it, and none of us wants the horror of what we have seen, unfortunately, happening here in Drakett. I think that, you know, superintendent- I think that, you know, Superintendent Stone gave an excellent message to the parents about reassuring them. It's very difficult when you have security questions to be able to discuss them, because obviously, you don't want to let people know if there is any weakness or issue. I'm very gratified to know that the Town Manager is working collaboratively again with the Superintendent to discuss addressing some of the security questions that had come up as part of our capital improvement plan, and I look forward to seeing those passing and getting taken care of. But from within the schools themselves, I agree with Mr. Wilkie, the ALIS program. I've talked with parents who learned about it and were very confident in it and know that our administrators and our staff have done everything they possibly can.
Thank you. All set? Well, I think now we could get on to closing statements. We'll each give you about a minute, ninety seconds if you choose to use that much. So take it away. Sue, why don't you go first?
So again, my name is Susan Kufagazos, and I'm a candidate for Drake it School Committee. I'd like to thank the Lowell Sun, Mr. Scott, Mr. Campanini for having the show this evening, Drake it Access Television for cable casting the program, and certainly those of you who are here in the audience and watching at home for taking the time to be better informed voters. As your School Committee member, I will bring a broad range of both personal and professional experience to the committee. I have over twenty-two years of experience as an active parent and advocate in the Drake it Public Schools. Drake it Performing Arts Boosters, among my experience include the Drake it Performing Arts Boosters, Sports, PTO Volunteer, and the School Council for the Greater Lowell Technical High School. As the parent of a student with dyslexia and one with a hearing loss, I understand the importance and the challenge of creating and maintaining a successful IP or a 504 plan, and the real opportunity for academic success when they are properly utilized and written. I have proven business experience. I grew up in a family real estate business, and I have worked in the retail industry for twenty-three years. I also spent time as a reporter for a cable television station in Lawrence. My background has given me experience in negotiations, sales forecasting, marketing, budgets, personnel, training, goal-setting, team-building, and effective communications. I believe that the Drake it taxpayers deserve regular fiscal reporting, easily accessible information in a timely fashion, and a fiscally sound capital improvement plan. I am a strong and independent voice, and I want to put my personal and professional experience to work for the Drake it Public Schools. I firmly believe that a sound school system enhances our entire community. My name is Susan Kufagazos, and I ask for your vote on Monday, May seventh.
Thank you. Incumbent Wilkie?
Thank you. Thank you, Mrs. Kufagazos, for the campaign as well as this evening. Thank you to anybody that attended this evening that's in attendance, and the Lowell Sun for putting this on. Anybody that knows me knows that I grew up in town. I graduated from Drake it High School in nineteen ninety-two. I've got two young boys. They're eleven and thirteen. I, six years ago, decided to run for School Committee on the tails, on the heels of the high school project. I've been somebody that's been passionate about education my whole life. I was not a great student. I struggled academically. One thing that I always had, and I tell the story all the time, is I had fantastic teachers. Teachers that cared about a guy like Joe Wilkie, who wasn't a great student, who wasn't the brightest kid in class. So many of those teachers, that's, to me, that's the heart of the Drake it Public Schools is our teachers. The people that are in the classroom caring about our kids. Why would you take another shot and elect me again for another three years? I'm terribly committed to the Drake it Public Schools. I care a lot about doing this. I would appreciate your vote. I want to do this for another three years. And, you know, you think about, again, to me, it's about trajectory and the progress that we've made. From where we were six years ago financially, from where we were six years ago with technology, from where we were with student achievement six years ago to where we are today, all of those things are up and to the right. So I would respectfully ask for your vote on Monday, May seventh, and thank you for coming.
Well, thank you, both of you, for attending tonight. I thought we had a good evening. And we'll just take a short break here for a few minutes, and then we'll bring up the two candidates that are running for Selectmen. Thank you, everyone.
Good evening, and welcome to our second of two events at historic and gorgeous Harmony Hall in Drake it, Massachusetts. This second debate will involve the two Selectmen candidates. Monday, May seventh, is the election. We hope that you will turn out and vote. This evening is a joint broadcast from Drake it Access TV and Cable. So with the Sun, I want to introduce our reporter, Amaris Castillo, who just won a major award as the top young journalist in New England, in the New England Society of Newspaper Editors. He's also a Drake it resident. Chris Tanny, our videographer from the Sun, who's also a Drake it resident. And I want to introduce, I want to introduce our moderator for this evening's debate, Chris Scott. Chris, take it away.
Thank you, Cam.
So just to go over a couple of ground rules, at seven oh five, we'll go for about forty, forty-five minutes. We'll try to get about a dozen questions in. Candidates will have a minute to respond, thirty-second rebuttal. And if you, you know, jumping up and you want to keep it going on a particular issue, we'll do that. My boss, Jim Campanini, will have the bell, but he didn't use it once during the School Committee debate, so I doubt he'll use it here either. So why don't we just get right to the questions? Joe, we'll start with you, and then Phil, you can respond, okay? It seems now that the Drake it Police Department Evidence Locker controversy is finally behind us. One police officer has been suspended, and one other police officer has been cleared. Looking back, Joe, how do you think that the Town Manager and the Police Department handled that, and would you have done anything differently?
Well, it's pretty difficult, because now we're talking about personnel stuff, but you know, I think, I think right from the get-go, I don't know, I think we were being a little too strong on it. I think we should have been moving in a direction of, you know, we had a new chief coming in. We should have let him take care of this. The evidence stuff, they have software now that they didn't have before, which makes it a lot easier to track. The AG's office found no evidence that was missing. I don't know. I think we spent a lot of time on something that could have been handled better within.
I'd like you to elaborate when you say it was handled too strong. What do you mean by that?
Well, I think we were trying to, I think we were trying to, I think we were looking for too much out of it. I think we were looking to probably bust someone down in rank. I think we were, I think we were just going at it too strongly. I think the department, from what I understand, has been run that way for many, many, many years, and they never, we never really, you know, the procedures that were being followed were the procedures that were in place. It's a very difficult one, because not being involved with the personnel stuff, I don't know everything there. I'm just being told by different people, and I don't know, it just seems to me that we might have tried to do something too strongly. I mean, the one officer that did get time off only got one day.
Correct.
That's not much for the effort that was put into it. I'm sure that the town side wasn't looking for that. I think they were looking for much more, but I guess the evidence was there that it wasn't.
Okay. All set?
Yep.
Candidate Tebow?
I would have to say I was somewhat surprised when I first heard about it. Having been on the Permanent Building Committee, I was on the committee when the new police station was being built. And there were specific program requirements that were being instituted within the building itself for evidence lockers, and they were talking about software to log in. As a matter of fact, doors would be card keyed, so you'd know who was entering through what door, and you'd be able to essentially track evidence and man, men everywhere within that building. And so when I, when I did hear about the evidence locker being mishandled and such, I was very surprised. Having said that, it is, it is an internal personnel issue, and so I'm not sure certainly how much the Board of Selectmen should start micromanaging something like that. I mean, it really is something that we're, as the Board of Selectmen, we're there for certainly for policy situations, but it's certainly an unfortunate situation, and I'm not sure if I would have done anything different than, other than watch it to see what was happening and then try to understand what happened.
Okay, well, let's talk about policy then for a minute. The Town Manager decided to hire this, the Evidence Locker issue grew out of a consultant's report about the operation of the Police Department. The Town Manager hired a firm to do that consultant's report. Do you think that that was a good idea, and should the, should the town's chief executive do exercises like that for other town departments, say the Fire Department or the Department of Public Works?
Well, it has, it has been done for the Fire Department, if it's up to me first. I know it has been done for the Fire Department. I suppose if an outline would have at least been produced, and I'm not sure if it had been for the Board of Selectmen to review, to see, okay, what is this audit going to do? What's the, what's essentially the goal of this particular audit? I suppose that's where you get the policy, and then let the audit take its course, and then let whatever the audit is go through the manager and it take a course there.
It sounds like, it sounds like you're not a big fan of such audits.
Without having a specific goal for it, I suppose, no. I mean, I've, it's like sending something into committee to study it, and you know, that's where it's going to die. So I'm not sure if you ever really get anything out of a particular audit. I know there's some questions about auditing the School Department, and that, to some degree, I think comes from, from some sort of mistrust. And I'm not sure what the goal of the particular audit is. I think the school's run very well, but to try to find some sort of layer of fat in there that could be cut off and utilized elsewhere, I think they're running very efficiently. So again, another audit is almost like sending it to committee and saying, you know, let's try to find something. You'll always find something, but what are you really looking for? That's the, that's the big issue.
Selectmen Duraco?
Plus, we did do an, we had an audit done on the police and fire. Personnel stuff, I don't think in either one came out very well. I think they created a lot of problems. I think when you get into personnel, it's, in a lot of cases, it's someone else's opinion. Their opinions are not always, in my mind, accurate. It might be the way they do things in another town versus Drake it. But the policies that were in effect, according to the previous chief, they were done the way he wanted them done, so I mean, I don't know if the problem lies with the personnel itself. There again, we don't deal with personnel. The manager and the police chief are the ones who deal with that part of it. We don't get involved with that stuff. But I still think the two audits, I don't think we got out of them quite what I had hoped we were going to get out of them. That they plan on doing a school audit, and the school audit is not going to involve personnel, which is probably a good thing. Because I think when you get into personnel, you have people who say stuff that, if they're unknown, they don't always, they're not accountable. They say things could be accurate, might not be accurate. If someone's not willing to put their name in my mind, then they're not worth what's being said.
What were you hoping to get out of the audits?
Well, I think it's the workings of, I think the audit, the whole idea of the audit is to see whether we're running our departments efficiently as we can. I think money's a big aspect, what our needs are. As far as personnel, I don't need someone to tell me that this is a good cop, this is a bad cop, this is a good fireman, it's a bad fireman. I don't think that was the intention of this. I think it was mainly to make sure that we are running as efficiently as we can with the money that we have. And as safely as we can.
Anything else to say on that?
No, no, I believe that's the true purpose of an audit, is to find out the efficiency. And to be honest, I think within Drake it, because of the limited funds that we have, we're running really as efficiently as we can.
All right, so let's talk about Drake it's limited funds. The town has one of the smallest commercial tax base bases of any community in the Murray Mac Valley. What can be done to attract new business to expand that commercial tax base? And Phil, this goes to you first.
That's a good question. I think first--
It's a question we ask every year, it seems.
It is. And I suppose--
We're still struggling with it.
Well, I hope I can, I can finally answer it. I think it's a matter of Drake it finally finding its identity.
That's my next question.
So far, Drake it has always been not only a bedroom community, but a drive-through community. So, you know, we have areas like the Navy Yard and Collinsville, and, you know, those are our downtown areas, if you want. And we have a business district over on Broadway and Loon Hill Road, that particular corner. But they're all, they all seem to be drive-throughs. People are going past them. What we have to do in Drake it is get people to stop. You know, we have thirty thousand residents here, and then in the Navy Yard section of Drake it, within a mile radius of that, we probably have a hundred thousand people who could actually be drawn to the Navy Yard. But we don't do anything to attract them here. And I often hear about how the river is the Great Wall, if you want, and nobody crosses because of the river. And I know a couple of people had trouble getting over the bridge today to get here. But, you know, there's a lot of people north of the river, and we should be attracting them to come to Drake it. Again, the Navy Yard section in Drake it, adjacent to the UMass Lowell, great source of income for Drake it, and we don't seem to be trying to attract those students and that faculty and all those workers to come to the Navy Yard, which is less than a half a mile. It's a nice little walk. We should be attracting them with coffee shops and bakeries and little stores and boutiques, and I think that's really an area that could really do a draw there.
Okay. Selectmen Duraco, you're smirking.
Well, I was thinking of the loop that they were talking about a hundred years ago. Put that loop in, and we'll be all set. But it's the same. I mean, I think what they did in Methune with that rotary has helped us a bit as far as getting traffic moved in and out of here compared to what it was before. I don't think it's as bad coming down one-ten or one-thirteen. As far as, I don't know what you're going to attract from, I mean, we have a lot of things that's coming up. We have, of course, we have the Genesis, we have the Circle Health, we have the Arbis, we have an assisted living that's going off of Bridge Street. We have a lot of stuff that, just from being there, are going to attract more people in. I don't know about the coffee shops and the donut shops. I think we, I think we're pretty well saturated on that stuff, like pizza and beer and whatever, but--
But I think that's a matter of understanding why we have all of those particular businesses. I think we have a population that leaves in the morning to go to work, so they want to grab their cup of coffee and their newspaper, or what, well, if they still read newspapers other than online now. But they're grabbing things as they're leaving the town. And then on the way back in the evening, while they may be tired, and now they want to grab a pizza or a sub or something quick, and they go home and for supper. So there's a large block of time that Drake it says, we're empty. We, you know, business is closed here now. And it's really those times in the afternoons or mid-afternoons, late mornings, that we should still be trying to attract people to come into town. Certainly, the rotary over at one-thirteen helps traffic, but it helps traffic leave Drake it. The Rourke Bridge, that'll be a big boon for Drake it, but it's a matter of people leaving Drake it to go somewhere else. We really have to get them here.
Joe?
It's one of those towns you can't get to from here. And it's, it's just that. I mean, people, they drive through. And I bet, I bet Bridgewood Plaza or on Bridge Street, you could have, the amount of thousands of cars that go through daily couldn't tell you what's in that whole strip mall. There's just no reason to stop, and they don't.
Again-- Hold on, Phil, you've interrupted twice now, so hold on. Joe, finish your, finish your--
Yeah, so all they're doing is they're going right through, and there's nothing to really keep them here. I don't know what the answer is on that. I think just from our economic development, the way it's going, I think that that's going to bring a lot of people in normally wouldn't have been here, and I think in the long run, it's going to help us.
Now, now you can go.
Excuse me for--
That's okay.
I--
That's why I'm here.
I'm passionate about it, I suppose. I mean, like--
Well, show us that passion.
My background certainly is an architect and planning and knowing this information. And so, like I said, Drake it has been a drive-through community, and to think that that's all we can be is, is a fallacy. I mean, we could be so much more. We have so many farms in this area that we could institute a farm-to-table sort of restaurant industry in Drake it. I mean, this, it's a matter of finding out what we want to be, and then instituting that.
Okay, so just listening to the two of you for the last six or seven minutes, it seems to me, Joe, and I'm not trying to put words in your mouth, that you would like to see Drake it maintain its kind of rural identity.
Definitely.
Okay. But Phil, I don't think you want to see that. Am I correct in that?
I think you're incorrect in that, because we can maintain that rural characteristic too. It's a matter of knowing how we can build within the areas that we want to build. So in, again, I refer to the downtown areas, the Navy Yard, Collinsville. Those are really more urban areas for us. But we still have a lot of suburban and rural areas within the town that I think can be maintained, just as that. It's a matter of getting our zoning to come in line with what those thoughts are, so we can-- So we can, we can make the areas that, our, our business district and our downtown areas, we can make those more dense and, and create more of a city atmosphere. And then out, out where Brock's Farm is and Parker, Parker Road with the Sager Farm and, and all the other farms, we can leave those alone and still maintain our rural characteristics.
Another crack at that, Joe?
I disagree. I mean, I-
Tell us why.
I've been, I've been in this town all my life and it's always been a rural community. And I, and I love it just for that aspect. It, it's been getting more and more populated. I mean, I can remember when you could go from one end of town to the other end of town in 10 minutes. Now it'll take you 25 minutes. It's, it's, it's not the same as it was, but that's growing, that's growing pain. I understand that that's gonna take place. Do I want it as a city atmosphere? Absolutely not. I like the rural community. I think that's why people come here. I think that's why people come here, they raise their children. I think they like, they just like that atmosphere. And I'm one of those.
I think we're on a, a good topic here. Do you wanna respond to that, Phil?
I, I would. Unless you allow those, those districts that I've been referring to to become more dense, then what you end up is sprawl. You'll, you'll get, you'll start losing the farms because people are gonna be coming into town. You're not, you're not gonna stop that. People wanna move to Drake it and, and, you know, I applaud those who wanna come here and live here. Oftentimes, they're referred to as blow-ins, but they choose to be here. So I, I think if you, if you, if you don't allow the, these downtown, more urban areas to, to become denser and, and grow vertically, if you want, then you're gonna get the rest of the town growing horizontally. And I'm, I'm in agreement with Joe. That would be awful. Drake it would lose a lot of gems that way.
There again, you see what's happening out on Broadway Road with the, with the three large buildings that's there? That, that area, once everything is open, that is going to be a congested area.
Can you be more specific, where are you referring to?
Well, where the Arbers is, where Circle Health is going, Genesis is going.
That's my next question, okay.
That's, yeah. That's gonna be, that's gonna be a pretty busy area in a short period of time. Once those three buildings are up, it's gonna be really busy over there.
Okay, so a, a question regarding that. Town manager Jim Duggan has been very proud of what he's been able to accomplish there.
We're proud of him.
And it's been written up in the state, in the pages of the Lowell Sun as well. Do you wish that that development didn't happen at that busy intersection?
No, that's not what I'm saying at all. I'm just saying that people are gonna realize that we're losing a lot of that rural atmosphere. It's just the way it is.
But that intersection is hardly rural, right?
No, but it just, just takes you to different parts of the town from there. You know, whether it's Parker Road area, Sager Farm area, whether it's Brock's, it's all the same road. You're all, you know, you're coming in and out of it. It's one of our main thoroughfares, it's like, you know, 110, 113, 38, they're all main, main thoroughways.
Okay. Phil? Just on the, on the Broadway Road development, do you-
I, I, I think that gets exactly to the point I'm, I'm making, that we should make those areas more, more urban and, and create denser areas and keep them compact. So we can protect the areas that are out by Sager Farm and Brock's Farm and the Shaw Dairy, as a matter of fact. I mean, those are areas that, excuse me, have, have a nice scenic vista as you're driving through. And I would certainly hate to see that disappear. And Community Preservation has done a tremendous job in trying to preserve those areas also by, by some of the, the monies that have been spent there to, to buy up development rights. But I, I, I think, again, it, it's a matter of creating these, these pockets of areas where we, where we wanna be denser. In, in the Navy Yard, I live in that section. My house lot is, is, is a 10,000 square foot house lot, much like every other house lot in that area. Our zoning bylaws right now require a house lot in the Navy Yard to be one acre. So I think we, we need to have zoning bylaws rewritten to, to match the areas and match the growth that we wanna have. So in the Navy Yard, we could set up perhaps a, a village residential district or, or zoning. So you need a 10,000 square foot lot. And then if you're doing in addition to your house, you don't need to get a, a variance or a special permit from a board because your house lot matches zoning. And then as you get further out towards the farms and such, you, you start to institute maybe a two-acre zoning for, for residential. So if, if a farm happens to, to go the way of a, of a sub-development, then we're still maintaining a lot of open space with it.
I think what's happening, you take even the Brock's Farm out there recently, in the last couple of years, they've, they've sold a couple of lots off and there's gonna be a filling station and a convenience store, that type of stuff. The, the problem everybody has to keep in mind, we can't make new land. The land that we have, and once it's used up, it's gone. I mean, we have to be very careful of what we put and where we put it. And, you know, as far as what's happened in the Loon Hill area, I, I supported all of that. I voted for all of it. I'm not, I'm, don't get me wrong, those were good economic decisions. They're sound decisions. I mean, in, in a few years from now, we'll reap the profits. Right now, we're, we're not, but we will. And in order to provide the services that we want, the education that we want, those are the things we have to do.
I believe some of the developments that you referred to on Broadway, Broadway Road, the Arbers and the Genesis, those developments were enticed with tax increment finance packages. They were given tax breaks. Am I correct on that?
Yes, you are.
Do you support that method of governance to try to spur that kind of development? Or should it be just, hey, if they wanna come, that's fine, but we shouldn't have to cut them a break?
The tax incentive was twofold. One, it was to entice them to commit, number one. Number two, they had to have a certain amount of employees, which was another thing that you were bringing. You were bringing jobs into the community. And so the tax incentive, if, if that's, you know, what it took to get them here, it's a good thing.
Okay. Phil?
Yeah, I mean, ultimately, it's a great tool for, as, as a new business is, is looking to where to relocate, to say, hey, this, this seems to be an excellent deal. I mean, off the taxes where it, it's being financed over a number of different years, we can, we can come into this community and start building. And then it, it really helps to advertise the community. We're welcoming businesses. We're putting them in the areas that we want because we're not just offering these, these TIFs to, to anybody. I mean, they're targeted. They have to be targeted. We don't wanna start offering a TIF for somebody to, to start building on a, on a farm that we're trying to preserve. And, you know, we're not gonna finance urban sprawl. We wanna keep them in areas that we want. So I mean, I, I would certainly see TIFs working very well in Collinsville and, and the Navy Yard because that's where I think we need to really spur, spur businesses to come in and develop those areas.
Okay. Phil, I'll get, I'll direct this question to you. I asked a similar question to the school committee candidates about the new contract for Steve Stone. It was about a year ago that the Board of Selectmen voted to give the town manager a new contract. I believe that was a three to two vote. Correct me if I'm wrong. And you were one of the dissenting votes. You can explain that in a second. But Phil, if you had been on the board, would you have voted with the majority on that? Or would you have voted with, would you have been a minority vote?
I think I would have been in the minority and that would have been-
Tell us why.
Probably just based on, on the, the ultimate number of compensation. I, I thought it was on the high side. He's done a great job. No argument about that. But I, I, I think it was just on the high side.
Okay. Joe?
I voted against it, it's no secret. I mean, he's done, he's done a pretty good job, there's no doubt about it. I would not, the, the raise I wanted to give him was not quite as high and I would have made it a percentage over the next three years instead of giving it to him all in one lump. I mean, where do you draw the line? I don't know. I don't know where you draw the line as, as far as what someone's worth. I, I thought, I mean, he's, he's got a lot of strong points, he's got a few weak points as well. And I just thought, you know, over time, you know, hopefully, we're gonna get, we'll get on the same page with everything. But-
Would you say we, you mean you and him?
Yeah, well, me and the board or whatever. I mean, you know, other than that, like I said, he's done a good job. We hired him to do for his economic development skills. He's providing it. So can I knock that? No, he's, he's doing pretty well on that part of it.
You mentioned he's got a couple of strong points and a couple of weak points. So what are those strong points and what are the weak points?
Well, the strong point is the economic development side of it. Bringing, bringing industry in. I mean, he's doing that, he's out, he's out doing it. Maybe his, his people skills might be a little, need a little bit, you know, with, with the help.
Can you elaborate on that?
Um.
People skills?
People skills. He's gotten better, but he's had some issues with, you know, people leaving and that type of stuff. We're not getting into it too deep, really.
Oh, the whole personnel thing, right? Phil, what about you? What do you see as his strong points or his weak points?
I, I think the man is a bull. And that's both a strength-
The man's what?
A bull. He's both strength and weakness. I mean, he, he sees a task, he gets it done. Great, great, I mean, great attribute to have. But likewise, he, he seems to be single, single-minded when he gets on that task. And it, it sometimes, the, the nuances of, of dealing with people can fall by the wayside and he can seem to be very brusque and, and sometimes offensive to some people. I think he's still a great gentleman. So I, I, I will never take one trait and, and, and try to wrap the whole personality around that one. I'll take the person as a whole and, and, and see, you know, what attributes are good and bad in there and then take the person as a whole.
Oh, I'm sorry. All set?
I, I think that's all said.
No, I was just gonna say, every Sunday in the political column, we have a little section called quotables. And I think the man is a bull will appear this Sunday. But, yes, go ahead, Joe.
Let me, let me just elaborate a little bit. But I was the one who made the original motion to hire him. I would still make it today. So, I mean, not everybody is-
If he's watching at home, he's probably happy to hear that.
Well, not everybody's perfect. I'm not perfect, nobody's perfect. I mean, we all have our, our strong and our weak suits and he's no different.
Okay, fair enough. You know, we talked earlier about the town of Drake it and its rural character versus commercial development. That always seems to be an issue. But there's another issue in preparing for this debate tonight that I asked a couple of people about, that this town just can't seem to get its act together to build affordable senior housing. It seems to be an issue every year. Correct me if I'm wrong, but I haven't seen any groundbreakings with members of the Housing Authority there and the town manager. So what's the deal? Why can't you folks get affordable housing done? Apparently, there's a long waiting list for it. Joe, why don't you go first?
Well, the, the, the main reason right now is there's no money. There's no money coming from the state of feds. You see, there's just no money out there. Nine years ago, we had a deal, we gave it to them on a silver platter and the housing turned it down. That was, that would have been 39 units. The state was giving us $3 million. The deal was all locked up. Senator Tucker at the time, she went to back-
But you're going back there.
Pardon?
You're going back a few years now.
Yeah, it was 2009.
Yep.
And we were buying it for 2.65. The state was giving us 3, $3 million, which they did. It would have been completely remodeled or, or say, they claimed that they wouldn't have had to put any money in for 25 years. So then they went out and they got their own specialist to come in and figure, a guy by the name of Slotnik came in and gave them two, two ways to show that it worked. And still, at the, at the end of the day, they just didn't like it. I mean, politics played a part of it, which was, which was terrible for the seniors, but that's the true deal. I've been attending other meetings since and there's just no money there. I mean, the last RFPs that they got for the Richardson project was, we couldn't, there's money out there for, what's the word? Family housing, but there's no money for senior housing. And that's, that's the deal. So they, they decided to hold on to that until a better time and hopefully, there'll be some money released for low-income senior housing, which is what the big list is. Because those are the ones that are making probably 15, 18, $1,800 a month and they're, they're struggling. And those people are, they're sacrificing all, all the time because they don't, you know, they don't know where they're gonna spend their money, whether it's gonna be on food, whether it's gonna be on drugs or what it's going to be. But, but that's the problem. And right now, there is still no money there and every, each day, all the time, we're looking, hoping that eventually, they'll release some money for it.
I've got a follow-up, but why don't you let, just Phil, will it Phil take a crack at that?
Well, it, it, as far as the project that Joe has referred to, I mean, I, I really wasn't involved at that particular time, you know, other than I was, I was on the, I was on the planning board at the time. But my experience as an architect is that I thought that was a bad deal. I had worked on other projects similar, in, in particular, one in Lawrence where it was a similar-sized building. And the only way it really works is if, if the community got the building for a dollar. And then they can pour money into it. The renovations that were, were being discussed at $3 million were, were only code issues from my understanding. And it's a building that, when it was converted to residential, should have never been converted to residential. So I mean, right away, it started off as a code violation in that regard. But again, 10 years ago, it's, it's, it's gone. We have, we do have 17 acres over at Greenmont Ave that could be developed. The Baker Administration has put out an initiative to have 135,000 housing units by the year 2025, I believe. And monies have been made available for that. In my discussions with Beverly Woods over at Northern Middlesex Council of Governments, I had asked, would money be available through the state for that particular project? And she assured me it would be. So there is money available. It's a matter of getting the project done.
Well, let's just, so that's my follow-up. You know, Joe, you mentioned earlier that you guys hired Jim Duggan with the expectation that he would, you know, bring in some economic development. To me, municipal governance is all about priorities. And the members of the Board of Selectmen, they set the agenda and it's up to the town manager to carry it out. So why doesn't the Board of Selectmen say, let's make senior housing a priority? It seems to me that hasn't been done. And until that gets done, this will just remain a pipe dream.
Well, Jim Duggan has been involved. I mean, he, he's, he's worked with them a couple of times to try and figure something out so that we could get some housing over there. So, I mean, everybody is, is trying. I mean, Mary Kavabaka, she's on top of this stuff all the time, so I don't know where Phil's getting it.
The executive director?
Yes. I don't know where Phil says that the money is there because I'll reach out to her again, but I don't think that's accurate. And it's the same with, you know, by the time we get 38 units, imagine how many millions of dollars that's gonna cost us now? We could have had 38 for 2.65. We could've had thirty-eight for two point six five. To say that, I mean, we have, we have seniors over there now, so, I mean, I don't know. How can we say that wasn't a good deal beyond me?
Um, well, as far, as far as money's available, there, there are. I mean, it, the initiative was, was instituted, was, um, first touted by the, the Baker administration in January, I believe. So, I mean, it's a fairly new initiative, but again, he wants to have a hundred and thirty-five thousand housing units, uh, by the year 2025, I believe, is, is the, the date. So money, he made monies available. I've, I've heard even up to about two billion dollars to make sure that those housing units are there, and they would be there for not only family housing, but for senior housing. Uh, and it, it, to, uh, to making it a priority. I know Jim Duggan has made it a priority to take the, the Town Hall annex and try to get that converted. And, um, I've had discussions with them, in, in specifically about how many units could be fit into a building like that, and, and I thought easily there could be, uh, ten units of, of housing in there, uh, and that would utilize both the basement, the first floor, and the second floor, so. Uh, kudos to him for talking with, uh, CBA and, and, and getting that, the ball rolling. Again, the building was turned, is being sold to them for a dollar, because it, the economics of it really don't work otherwise. Uh, two, two hundred thousand dollars has been, um, also added to the deal, uh, to help maintain some of the historic preservation of the exterior. So I, it, it's, taking old buildings and, and converting them to, to a specific use like that, it, they can, it, it can be costly, and in some cases, it, it needs to be done almost charitably. Again, buying it for a dollar and then renovating it.
Okay.
The experts, uh, I mean, they had experts come in and they, and they, they reevaluated the whole thing. I don't think an architect is, is, is an expert when it comes to those.
There's a shot.
Yeah, well, well, call a spade a spade, I guess.
Phil? You can't let that one go.
No, so, I mean, if he wants to talk about being experts, like, like I said, uh, Louisburg Square, when it was converted from a business use to a residential use, it violated building codes. It should have never been done that. It violates National Fire Protection Agency codes. Um, and, and, and Mr. Duraco, as a firefighter, should have been jumping up and down about that.
Hold on, Joe. Finish your thought.
Oh, I'll finish there.
Okay. Joe?
Well, first off, I was the fire chief, I wasn't a firefighter at that time.
Well, you were a firefighter, one time.
A little bit different.
I would say that makes it worse.
So he's telling me that, he's telling me that our building inspectors, that nobody's doing their job. I guess that's what he's saying.
Why don't you ask him?
I would say that you weren't doing your job if you were fire chief and you let it go.
I'm not the building inspector.
Well, for a short while, you know, when we didn't have a building inspector, you were, you were the acting building inspector, so I would assume that you would have some knowledge of not only the building code, but National Fire Protection Agency codes.
I think that train had probably left by then, but, um, anyway.
Mm-hmm.
It was not under my control. It, it's under the building inspectors, that's why we have them, that's what their job is. If a building doesn't meet code, then they're supposed to do something about it. Um, that's all I can tell you.
All right. You said earlier that there just isn't the money to do senior housing. If you had to take a knife to Drake it's municipal budget, where do you think that there is waste and abuse, and what would you cut?
After working under Dennis Peendak for many years, there's, there's not a lot to cut. There really is not. They're gonna do an audit on the school, they've done a, they've done an audit on the police, they've done an audit on the fire. Uh, services keep going up, which means that we have to, it takes more people to provide these services.
The cost of those services.
The cost of those services keep going up. So, I don't think we have a lot of waste in town, unless the audit come back on the schools, I just don't see that happening. I don't.
Well, you said the schools, but what about the town side?
The town side, the, the audit took in, the police, the fire, the highway, they have, didn't do one on the highway, but we, we took in the other two major budgets. The school, of course, is the biggest budget, but the, the other two major budgets is your police, your fire, and your highway. I don't think there's a lot of cuts there. I really, I just don't. I mean, you can't expect to keep providing more and more services with less. It just doesn't work.
Phil?
I, I, Drake, I think Drake it's biggest problem is that the, the tax levy ceiling started off very low when Proposition Two and a Half first was instituted. Um, and so, I, I, to some degree, the only way we can really get out of it is by increasing the ceiling somehow, but through economic development. Getting in businesses that, that don't rely on all of the services that we need, and, you know, in particular, I suppose, the schools, and that we can take that additional fund and, and put it to where we need it.
And now we're circling back to one of the issues we hit on earlier, but let's not go there. So let's go to just a few of the items that are on the town meeting warrant, um, some expenditure items. Um, there were three questions I'd like to ask you guys, and being the former firefighter, I mean, fire chief, I'd like to ask you this one first. Should residents of town meeting vote to appropriate a sum of money for constructing, equipping, and furnishing a new fire station to be located at 539 Nashua Road?
Yes.
And tell us why.
Well, that's been in the plan for some twenty years. When, when we redistrict the town back in two thousand, that's when we built the Jones Avenue Station. We did that one in two thousand, we did the central station in two thousand two, with, with the hopes that someday we would be able to modernize what we call Station Three. I mean, it's a pretty tough spot to get in and get out of, it's just not big enough. Um, now, because their NFPA is requiring three men to a piece, which means that there are three firefighters now responding on a fire truck that weren't before, there was just two. Um, so, we've grown out of that station. Um, plus, it's not a safe station as far as, uh, you know, the exhaust, everything, it, it's just not up to date. Um, the Nashua Road location, we had the place on Lakeview Avenue, but then the owner of that property came to me about buying that, see if we could do something with that piece of land off Nashua Road. And Mr. Duggan looked into it with the fire chief, and they figured out it would be a much better place to have the station, because it would be all on one, all on one level, it'd be able to do drive-through bays, and it, and it'd have enough room to do some training and that type of stuff. And long-range down the road, I mean, someday, we may have our own ambulance, and, and they'll all be big enough to handle that.
Okay.
Pretty much it.
Phil?
Oh, I'm squarely behind it.
Okay.
Uh, three years ago, on the Capitol Planning Committee, uh, I was there, and Fire Chief Buley, it, it said, "Number-one priority has, has been a fire station for Collinsville." And in that same meeting, that he said, "I know that we don't have a location, that we don't have the funds for it, but that's our number-one, uh, our number-one need for the fire department." And so I took it upon myself after that meeting to go home and take a look at some maps, and I found a piece of, piece of property that the town owned on Lakeview Ave, across from Dillon McEnnessy Park. Uh, it had been deeded to, uh, the Housing Authority for a short while for senior housing, and they never built on it, and it reverted back to the town. So I did a few sketches, because of my architectural background, I ended up planning, and I was able to fit a three-bay fire station. It was two stories, so, you know, dormitories were up on the top, uh, but I showed it could work. Uh, you get the trucks off of, off of Lakeview Ave, you had a backup, sure, it's not the best, but you know, it's better than working in the garage that they're working in now. And so, you know, let's not let a good plan be the enemy of the, or a perfect plan be the, the enemy of the, the perfect. Um, so I, I presented that to Jim Duggan, uh, and I said, "Do you need anything else here, or is this enough for you to, to do any sort of planning you need to do?" And he, he said, "No, I think this is enough." And so, from that point on, we've been working towards a fire station. Yes, the, the property on Nashua Road, far superior site to the one on Lakeview Ave. We're able to keep it to one story, drive-through bays, it works well, but it would have never happened if the Lakeview Ave property wasn't investigated first.
Fair enough. Joe?
The Lakeview Ave property, I was the one who made the motion to give that to the, to the housing with a number of years, that if they couldn't build on it, would revert back to the town, which it did. I mean, we were looking at it to put a station there, we even met with a neighbor, we got it rezoned, we were gonna take a little corner of the driveway, uh, Mr. Cardwell up there, and it wasn't the best, but then when the other one, the Nashua Road piece of land came available, that was definitely much better on the way to go.
So one last question on the town meeting warrant, and this goes back to the, what appears to be the theme of the evening about the town's rural character versus development. Should residents of town meeting approve a sum of money in community preservation or CPA funds to be spent on the acquisition of twenty acres of farmland at 133 Phineas Street? Phil?
I'd certainly like to take a look at what the land is, but, uh, certainly to maintain some of the rural character, that might be a beautiful location. Um, Phineas Street, that's towards the, again, the Navy Yard section, so it might, nice to, within that sort of dense urban area that I'm talking about, have, have an area that could be left wild. So I think that might be a great idea.
I'm familiar with that piece of land, um, it's pretty, it, there's a lot of wetlands that goes with it. I couldn't, I remember one time, we had a horse that was stuck in the mud there, and we had to pull the horse out, and, um, but it's, it's, it's pretty wet in there, it runs along the brook.
So it's meaning, it's not buildable?
I, I would think a lot of it is not, is not buildable, right. It's just too bad it doesn't connect up with the high school. I think there's a, there's a stretch of land there that someone else owns. If they could've connected that up, then it would've been great for walking trails or whatever to go up to, you know, all the way up to Beaver Book Farm and that type of stuff.
Fair enough. I asked this question to the school committee candidates, I'd like to pose it to you guys as well, about, uh, the various social media platforms in this community that are very active in, in spreading, uh, different types of information about different people. Um, Phil, what is your view of that kind of activity? And should the town, or, or should there be any type of effort, private effort, town effort, whatever, to rein that in?
Well, I, I...
Or trying to hold those people accountable, I should say?
I suppose people should, should, you know, uh, try to police themselves. I mean, it's certainly not, uh, any, any sort of, um, activity that I really condone. Uh, I think a lot of people have heard me say, uh, in Drake it, it's never politics, it's always personal, uh, and I think that needs to stop. And I, again, politics, the way I look at it, is you can have a disagreement, and it can be, you know, very vivid if you want, uh, but at the end of that discussion or argument, you're willing to have a cup of coffee with the person, and talk about going fishing or something like that. Uh, in Drake it, it never seems to be politics, as I've just described it, it always seems to be personal.
Okay. Joe?
Zero tolerance for that, um, happens way too often. Um, the biggest problem is probably his friends, um, that are doing it, so...
And who might you be referring to?
Well, I think he knows who his friends are, and I think, you know, the connection of whoever, it's all on it, so...
Phil?
Um, I'm, I'm, I don't care to respond to that, I mean, it, it...
Well, he, he said that, these are your friends and supporters.
Right, so he could say it's my friends, but you know, I, I suppose the old saying, "It takes two to tango." I mean, it, I suppose he, I could say, "His friends are spurring it on too," so I, I think it's, this sort of thing is certainly not very productive, and I, I really wouldn't want to take, partake in it any further than this.
Okay. All set? So I, I wished I had done this with the school committee candidates, but I didn't. This is the last question, though. Each of you have an opportunity to ask a question of one another. So Joe, why don't you ask a question of Phil, and Phil, you can ask a question of the selectman.
Phil, I think, I think, I don't know how you don't, you don't see your position as, it's a conflict of interest. First off, you, you stepped off of the planning board because of conflict, you've done work in the town that, uh, as an architect, um, and you, you go to various boards to get waivers on, on warrants. I don't know how you feel that being an architect and sitting on the Board of Selectmen when we vote on special permits isn't a conflict.
Well, uh, perhaps you could enlighten me on what specific, uh, special permits and warrants and such I've gone for. Um, yes, I did resign from the planning board. I was, uh, I was working on a, a project in Drake it, um, and I thought it would be inappropriate for me to stay on the planning board, uh, where I could recuse myself and still stay on the board. I thought it would be more appropriate for me, after fourteen years on the planning board, and never having this question come up, I thought it was most appropriate for me to, to step down and let somebody else come in behind me and, and, and continue the work of the planning board. Um, I, I find, I, I have no conflict of interest, and, uh, if, if Mr. Duraco's definition of a conflict of interest is my interest within the community, I can see why he is disinterested in this community, and he has no conflicts.
Joe, do you, can you cite a specific project where your opponent, um, was an advocate for, or was part of the application process?
Probably Gun Range.
But, I'm sorry?
On Target, the Gun Range.
Is that true?
I'm not sure what specifically you're...
Gun Range on Bridge Street. You only did one.
Yeah, I know, but, um, I mean, I, I didn't go in front of any board to, as an applicant...
I didn't say you did. I didn't say you did. You were, actually, I think at the time, you were an alternate. My point is, how can you vote on special permits and sit on the board? Either, either the stuff that you're, you're doing, or your competitors are doing.
Uh, I, I, I wouldn't be. I wouldn't be. I mean, a, a, as I've said previously, I've served on the planning board for fourteen years, and I've never had this particular issue come up. Um, I'm very forth, forthcoming on, on anything. As a matter of fact, um, when CBS on Broadway came in front of us, um, I had a friend who worked for CBS as a senior vice president in charge of real estate, and I told Dennis Peendak that I was going to step down and, and recuse myself from that particular hearing. And he said, "He's only a friend, you don't have to." I said, "I know, but I don't want to lose a friend over, over a denial if I have to do that." So I, I, I have no conflicts of interest here. I know what, I, I, my license requires me to act ethically, and in the, in the interest of, of the public welfare and, and public safety, so I'm not gonna jeopardize my license as, as Mr. Duraco may, uh, for his friends. I mean, I'm, I'm just not gonna do it. That's my livelihood.
Now it's your turn to ask Selectman Duraco a question.
To be honest, I really didn't even think of one, so I would, if you would...
Well, you gotta be on your toes if you're gonna be a selectman.
What's that?
You gotta be on your toes.
If, if, if you would allow it, I would let one of the people in the audience ask.
So you have no questions?
I have no questions for him.
Does anyone in the audience wish to ask Selectman Duraco a question? Sir? Why don't you just stand up? Why don't you stand up?
Marijuana retail sales, Provo.
That's a great question, I should've asked that.
Yeah. Um, the people voted for it. Uh, I don't agree with it, because I, I, I don't think it's a good example we're setting for our kids. You know, everybody compares it to alcohol. I mean, it was the same as growing up, you see, I mean, you see, if you put alcohol in front of them, they're gonna try it. It's the same. You're gonna put marijuana in front of them, they're gonna try it. But, the people voted it, and I would not, I, I think there's an article on there just for rules and regulations on, on it. I'm going to support it. Um, I don't like it, but I'm gonna support it. It's, it's too late to vote against it, anyway. What, what these are is just to strengthen things that we can do for guidelines on what they're doing.
Phil?
Uh, I'm...
What's your question?
I, I personally don't care for it myself, but it, it is legal, so I mean, we will deal with it as we legally can. Um, that would, that would be about it.
Fair enough. Any questions?
I just wanted to know, in your mind, do you think Drake is better off now than it was two years ago, and would you see it transpiring in the coming years now?
You know, I, I was listening to, to a, a speaker, uh, at, at a graduation, and he said, you know, um, that if, you know, things are good enough, but i- if things are, are good enough, they're, they're really not. If, if they, things could be, if they're not good enough, if they could be better. They're not good, they're not good enough if, if they're only better, and they could be their best, and it's, it's not good enough if they're the best if it's not consistent. So I don't think Drake it isn't the place it needs to be at the moment. Uh, I, I think it really needs to look at its identity and be the best it can, and be it consistently.
Thank you, Phil. Joe?
I think we're, we're heading in the right direction. I mean, we've got more money in free cash right now than we've had in a long time. We've got, um, we're, we're net school spending, I think we're a million three, or something above that. We've been able to, the shortfalls that they've had on their busing, whether it been a technology stuff, we've been able to find the money to do it. We've been hiring, uh, police, fire, uh, school, I don't know exactly what they've been hiring, at the highway department, so, I, I don't know how you think, how you can say things are bad, 'cause I don't think they're bad. I think we're headed in the right direction, and if we keep going this way, it can only get better.
Fair enough, gentlemen. I want to thank you both for participating in tonight's debate. I should point out that there is a third candidate on the ballot, his name is John Joyce. He was unable to be with us this evening. He told me he had a death, a, a close friend of his died, so he was unable to be with us tonight, but he will be on the ballot. So now we've come to the point where you can each have about a minute, ninety seconds, to tell the voters of Drake it why they should vote for you. Phil, why don't you start?
Well, thank you very much for hosting the event, I, I'm very grateful for, for this particular venue. You know, I could go on for, I suppose, ninety seconds, but, you know, the last ninety minutes, the, the last forty-five minutes, I think, probably tells it the best.